Hey, welcome everyone. I see people are starting to flow in. If in the chat you want to just type where you're from and what math class you teach, that'd be great. You can also open up the Q and A box. So if you have questions, you can pop them in there. And we'll get started in a couple of minutes as people roll in. Everyone, if you're just rolling in, we'll get started in a couple of minutes. But if you want to type your location and your subject that you teach in the chat, that'd be great. And you can also open up the Q and A box. So if you have any questions, you can type them in there throughout the session. We'll get started shortly. All right, it looks like the entries have started to slow. So I think we'll get this kicked off. Welcome to the study session specifically for math. Great to see so many people out there from so many different locations and a wide variety of grade levels. Thanks for entering those in the chat. My name is Mike Swolme. I'm actually a current data scientist here at Quizlet. But before I entered data science, I was a former educator in Title One schools in Denver for eight years. I was the high school math and science curriculum director for a couple of years. And also taught ninth grade physics and sixth grade science. And I still keep coach high school speech and debate in the area today, which is a lot of fun. Want to give a special shout out to Rory. She's a high school math teacher and Abbott Quizlet user. A lot of the tips from this presentation came from her and also the testimonial from her class. So just want to give her a huge shout out today. So for our agenda today, we'll start by focusing on making math study sets and copying and editing editing sets. Then we'll talk about how it can fit in the learning journey. And then we'll dive into some examples of those, looking at some of our learn and test modes, gamification, homework help, and then also talking about some in development aspects as well as identifying the impact again as identified by Rory, our great math teacher. So let's start off with making math study sets. The So for math, this is the biggest, the creation is the biggest difference between math and all the other languages. A lot of the languages are easier to create in some ways. But so for math, there are some tips that you can have is oftentimes you want to put the problem on the right side and have the solution on the left, which is kind of the opposite of the term and definition that you might have for traditional vocabulary. The benefit of that is particularly that you can add images on the definition side. So especially if you are heavy on graphs, that can be really helpful. Also, there's a language option which I'll show you and we'll demo this in a little bit, but that you can select math and symbols, which can give you some additional math creation functionality. Recommend keeping the problems relatively brief because it will help the study modes perform better. In the plus version, you can add in your own custom graphs, pictures and diagrams. And another tip is to make sure the study sets are at least 10 or more terms. The more terms you have, it can make the study modes more effective because they'll give different multiple choice questions for users. And so if there's just a fewer terms, it's not as effective. So the more terms, the better. And then also really big tip strategically name them so students can find them easily. Oftentimes you'll want to put a name for the for the actual like lesson you're in. So maybe it's algebra. Chapter eight, lesson one, then it's super easy for your students to find and also for you to organize and find when you look at all the different sets you have. But if you don't want to go creating your sets, we have tons and huge base of existing content. So copying and editing is also a great option. So you can search for a study set and you can then add those directly to your classroom folder and use them. Alternatively, you can also copy the study set into your account and you can remove, add, edit, anything that you want. So you can adjust that to your individual needs, but while still saving you a bunch of work. And another cool tip is that if you find a teacher with great content, you can search their account. If you click on their little name and I'll show this in a second. You can search the rest of their account and find the rest of their content. So you can copy it over really easily. So let's actually dive in with doing some demoing. So for creating the set, so this is kind of your homepage. You'll go to this create button for plus and then create a flashcard set. And so in this mode, you'll see that there are new automatic upload options that we have. If you have things that are definitional or conceptual, this can work really well. But for most of your problems, we, this doesn't yet work great for math. And so instead I would choose create flashcards yourself. So if you go to that create flashcards yourself, you'll see this traditional screen like we saw on the deck before. And so then you can put in your answers and problems in here. And so again, the recommendation is that especially if you have a lot of graphs, the image option is on the right side. So putting your problem here can be helpful. So for example, if you want to factor something, you can put this in here. And so you can scroll down and find some of the, you know, squared buttons. So maybe it's X squared plus five X plus six. And then on the right, you can type in your answer X plus three. And X plus two. And again, the language option, the math and symbols is right here. It's automatically selected for me, but you can go and look towards that. And then you can just hit create. And so now I'll need a term language to create these sets. Oh, so I didn't choose the language here. So we can choose that as math and symbols as well. And then hit create. And so now I have a set. I can copy this link really easily to share on Google Classroom, can also directly share on MS Teams. That's in your school's needs. And great. And so now just looking in the chat questions. Yeah. So the import for magic notes, this doesn't do a great job of pulling equations from images right now. So that's why I would definitely go the standard route. We're continuing hoping to improve those things so that it can do more automatic aspects for math specifically down the road. And then, so if you don't want to create these from scratch, you can search for a whole bunch of content. So maybe I want to look at Sokotoa content. And so now I can look and go to flashcard sets. And so you'll see a bunch of different flashcard sets here and there's a preview on the right. So I can preview, look at what it is. And then if I like it, then I can go to study. And now it's really easy to add this. So I can click on this air triple dots down here and I can either add it directly to a folder if it's in my account. Or I can add it directly to a class. These are some of my old classes that I used to have content in. And you can also then save and edit it. That would be the option. If you want to create a copy of it for yourself and edit it. And then you can create it there. So super easy to use, really great. So tons of options to get different sets, both either creating them on your own or finding them from other people. Oh, and I did want to show you just how to find the teacher, but so let's just look for another, let's look for multiplication facts. And so let's see, let's see. So there's a teacher here. So let's say I really like this set and I liked what B Martin did. If I just click on their name, I can now see all the flashcard sets that they've created. So maybe it matches the things that I want. Looks like they have a mixture of science and other things. So not so much for this teacher, but if you find a really great teacher that matches, that's a really great tip for finding different content. And yeah, as far as sharing for other LMSs, Canvas, School of the others, we don't have those connected right now, but those are something that we're looking to investigate further. So let's talk about where can it fit in the learning journey. So the great part about making practice problems that is that your students can always go at their own pace. And they'll always know if they're on the right track. So they're going to get instant feedback of whether they got it right or wrong. So that's like really the beauty. So you could use this for independent practice. You could use it for optional review practice. Even homework assignments, if you want to do that. Another great way is to use it for gamification. And so there's fun ways to engage with the content and review. You can make groups or individual and we'll go through a couple of those options. I know that engaging students and believe me, I felt the pain of trying to keep them engaged in class. And so any sort of gamification will always be a really fun option for them. And the benefit also with review games is you can kind of join a bunch of these sets together at the end of your chapter. And so then you can use those to review altogether. Another thing that I really liked and which I loved Quizlet for when I was doing it is fluency drills. So for things that you want to get really honed in on for your students and make them aware of and recall really quickly, like maybe basic definitions, maybe multiplication facts. The things I used in physics were looking at SI units needed to know, you know, a thousand is what kilo kilo means. And then being able to translate between these SI units really quickly. Some other examples in math might be different graph shapes, like maybe you want polynomial shapes to know like, oh, this is a parabola. And this is, you know, X squared, or you know, you have different levels of polynomials and what those look like. So anything that you want, just really quick repetition are great for fluency drills. I would often do a five minute fluency drill in the middle of my class to break up the lesson and drill in other skills. And so it can just kind of be a review practice and just kind of break it the lesson a little bit, give them a little different thing to do and keep things the kids, students motivated and just keeping the class moving quickly. The two other things I really like about Quizlet that you can use it for is for differentiation. So like remediation or extension activities. Remediation can be review and practice of basic skills that are super foundational. Maybe you just want to review an old skill that will help your students in class for this particular standard. And you review something that you did, you know, a month ago, that'll just build them up. And so everyone does that for their warm up. Alternatively, you know, I taught a lot of students that were had, came in at multiple different ability levels and skills. And so maybe you just want to really drill in, you know, multiplication facts or division facts for them and get those down really well. And so the remediation can be a great way to use Quizlet. And then extension activities are also popular because since you have so much content on the site that you can find. Let's say you have some students that are just flying through the content really quickly. You can let them explore some other math content on Quizlet while other students are working at their own pace on the existing content. So let's talk about some of the actual modes that you can use to actually then implement these in your class. So learn and test modes are kind of our bread and butter, basic ones that do really amazing things. So learn mode provides individual paced learning that walks your students through the content. And it'll adapt based on what they get right and wrong. And so we use machine learning behind the scenes in order to give you different app answer choices. And then it'll slowly get harder and harder. You'll often start with multiple choice questions and then you'll have to write in the answer directly. Test mode acts like a mock wizard test for a student, just to gauge how well they're understanding the content. And so it can be a good simulation for them to just check for their understanding. And the really big tip here that I want to focus on is make sure you set up classes. So if you have a class setup and you've added your students and sets to that class, your students will have free access to these learn and test modes as much as they want, whenever they want. And so these are paid features for most of our users, but as long as you set up a class and have your users in there and the sets in there that you want them to study, will get unlimited access. So definitely highly recommend that. So let's take a little look at what some of these modes look like. So I'm going to keep on multiplication facts because as I'm demoing, I don't want to show my embarrassing on the spot skills of harder math problems. But you have all these modes here. And so learn is one of our best foundational ones. You can set up whether, how well you know the material, if it's all new, you know, some of it, or you know, most of it, and it will adjust kind of the difficulty that it'll start with. I'll start, it's all new and I'll do start learn. In the upper right, there's some great options. So a lot of these, because we're just doing practice problems and you don't want them to kind of get repetitive in an order. Shuffling terms can actually be really beneficial. So it shuffles up all the problems well. Also, if there, you're seeing weird things where the, you know, the question that you want is not showing up at the top. You can always change how you're answering this. So right now this will let me answer with terms and definitions. Right now, the term is seven by three. So that seems like the right problem. If that becomes, it'll start doing the inverse of those. If I want to limit it to just the problems, I can again, change how that question format is and just answer with the definition is what I want and never answer with the term. Alternatively, if you flip those, you can tell your students to flip those around as needed based on how you set up your set. But so those are some settings that are helpful. You can also set whether you want them to use flashcards or not with these problems. And so as you're going through, you'll answer these. Nine times five, oops, I got that one wrong. So it shows me that I got it wrong. And now I see the correct answer. And I'll continue and it'll come back to that for me. So two times eight is 16. Gives me some nice sound effects. Three times five is 15. And you can paste it along. It'll paste a certain amount of questions and then give you kind of a screen that'll show how you're doing and progressing. And then it'll keep answering the questions that you get wrong so that your students can answer them again. So this is a great option. And as it gets harder and harder, as you go along, then you'll start typing in directly the answers rather than getting the multiple choice options. And then we have a test mode. And so this is again a mini test. So you can change how many questions you want to answer. You can change again the term definition or both. For this one, it was set up where the term was the problem and the definition was the answer. So it makes sense that we're just answering with the definition. And you can also change the question types that you might want to provide your students. So whether there's true, false, multiple choice, matching, or written ecstatic questions. And so this is true, false. And you can go through this and answer all of these. And I'll just skip to the end to show it, but this will give you instant feedback for your student. And so it'll tell you how many you got correct and correct. You can also take a new test again when this is unlocked. And then you can also practice these tests and term. So if they're doing, you know, struggling on it, they can jump back to learn and go through and paste themselves that way. So let's learn and test, which is kind of the bread and butter study modes that you can use with these, which are really great. I think the next big area for opportunity is gamification is to really engage that audience. A few different options here that we have is first is match. This is really great for individual matching against the clock. There's a leaderboard and you try to beat, you can try to beat your best time. So this is really great for fluency activities that you're trying to get really, really fast, you know, knowing those multiplication tables, knowing those definitions that you want. And the student can work against their themselves and just try to keep beating their time and the rest of the people that are studying that set. Classic live has really high engagement levels from classes. So you can put them into either individual or groups and the groups will be random. But then you'll want to get the group together so that they're working together. They'll see different answer options on each of their screens. And then they'll have to decide which is the right answer. And so it's really great when you're more for problem based stuff. You want them to work together, try to solve the problem, discuss and give them options there, but also gives that competition of like getting it right and you know, winning the game. And then blast is a new game and we're working on a bunch more. You can put random groups or individuals, they'll be up to four groups. And then they can blast down these asteroids with their answers. And so we'll actually like try that in a little bit. But first, let's just jump to match. So again, they'll enter it from, once they find their set, which you want to have in their class, so they can access it easily. You can play match. So now I, you can see the clock running up here. There's also sound if you want to engage with them. So let's see, two times five is 10, 24 is three times eight, 11 times five is 55, five times four. And 23.6 seconds. So now you'll see on sets that have been studied a bunch, we have a leaderboard here. And so you can see the top 10 and also where you place. I don't think I did well enough that I got on here. So I'm trying to beat my best time of 23.6 seconds as I went very slowly. But that's matching. So that's a really great individual option. And then blast is a new game that we're playing. And so on my screen here, I can get started. You can choose whether you want definition or terms. And so I'll select the term, the problem up here with the three by three. And so if any of you want to actually jump in and play, I would love to see this live. You can join, go to Quizlet.live and type in the code or open up the device. We'll see if any students jump in. While I'm waiting, I'll see if there's some other questions we can answer. Is there a way to do any graphing or modeling? No, not at this time. So you can have pictures and images in there, but it won't be interacting for them actually making the graph. So just be more identification or identifying the equation for it. And is it possible to copy a single flashcard from a set? No, the well, technically, yes, you can copy the entire set and then you can delete all the other options for flashcards. But that would be the only way to do it. And so you could go through and just delete and get that one thing that's left, but there's not a way to just specifically copy over the other set. Alright, so we have some people in here. So let's see, we'll launch it and see how it goes. Start game. So you can see which group you're in. And I'll add more players. So, so when it said there were still more players coming, then I'll come back to the lobby. I'm just going to continue. So let's see which of these teams are ready to win it. And so this I would have up on my screen for in front of the class. Just give that, you know, attention factor, the game factor. Hope you're, I don't get to actually see the shooting of the asteroids from my end, but hope you're all having fun shooting them down. And we have like 30 seconds left in the game, but if I needed to end it early, I could always end the game early. And there's also some setting options in here as well. Alright, 16 seconds left. Great. And so now you see the different groups here. So we have all the groups and like how many each of them scored. So you can also do it by player. It looks like someone wants to play one more game, which I'm not opposed to. So it's just a quick minute. So let's play again. And then I think now I need to add more students. So now if anyone wants to get in another shot. Join now. Any last joiners, takers? Give my teacher countdown of five, four, three, two, one last in. Great. And now I'll start the game. And off to the races for shooting down those asteroids. This also has a music option. Add some extra tension. Alright, 10 seconds. Five seconds. Alright, group one is the winner this time. And then my player gray is our Kandar champion of the game. Alright, thanks everyone for playing that game. I'm sorry. It looks like someone got jumped into a flashcard somehow. But definitely try it out with your students. It's a lot of fun and engagement. I'm going to skip classic live for now, but it's basically has a similar kind of board where you're tracking along and it shows the progress of people. But not quite as dynamic of a game. You're answering your questions as quick as you can. Another option for math is homework help. And so especially if you're a teacher that has a ton of textbooks or is a textbook based, this can be really helpful. So this is a paid feature that doesn't have a student exception. But if your students need that extra step support of showing like a step by step solution guide, this is something that can be helpful for them, especially if you have your textbook in there. There's tons of different stuff that have verified solutions by experts. And we've added millions and millions of questions over the last couple of years. So in development, so practice tests is a super exciting new feature where you can upload all these materials and it'll create practice questions for you. And then it can create a whole question bank. So it can give you different sorts of practice tests. And it'll track your progress along. Unfortunately, the caveat here is that math subjects aren't yet supported. They're planning to work on them next year. Right now they work well for language topics, but not so much for the practice problems for now. Stick with those traditional modes and test mode as your best option for math. But we're excited to keep working on that and iterate on that. So hopefully we'll have that soon. And then the other thing I wanted to call out that is new for this back to school is launching a student pass. And so that is, this is only seen on the teacher's screen. If your students have a student account, they won't see this. But basically, I think if you were in one of the earlier sessions, you saw how it worked, but basically you can activate this. And then there's a code for them. But unlike the code that we just played in blast, this allows you to play any of these games with a code and your students don't have to be logged in. So if you want no setup, you don't, your students' accounts aren't available. And you want, you know, ads free, no interruptions. You can launch this up to seven times a day. It'll work for an hour for your students. And so again, still highly recommend you setting up your classes because this allows your students to work at other times. You know, if your student needs extra practice outside of class or wants to really study for that exam, this guest pass won't unlock that for a long period of time. It's just for the hour that you activated. But it's also a super fun option. If you want to just quickly get things going, I know all the setup stuff can be annoying. And so it's a really great option for you to get your students playing in class. And so then just want to kind of close out on the impact before we jump to Q and A. This is again from that great math teacher, her Instagram accounts and Quizlet accounts are on the next slide. She teaches high school algebra, but she says it's a huge time saver. Especially once you create the sets, that can take some time, but once you have them there, you're good to go for years. Unless you choose to edit them down the road and adjust your curriculum. And so that's really helpful. It can also speed up your review games because you have all these sets that are available there. That's so much more practice than on paper reviews. Your students have access to the practice at their fingertips. And so whenever they need it, if they need the extra time, they can be working on it. And the engagement factors always super magical, she said, especially in Quizlet Live. She loves the way that you can play with individuals and also the group work. This is a picture from her class. In fact, working together to solve some of these problems. And then students also learn the benefit of how they can create these for their other classes. And so they can study and cross over to all their other content subjects as well. It's a super reliable tool and her students really love it. And so with that, thank you so much for joining. Again, these are her both Quizlet account. If you want to go check out some of the sets she has for algebra and also the Instagram. So yeah, I guess I'll jump back over to the Q and A. So feel free to type in the Q and A aspect a spot and I can keep answering questions. Is any chance of allowing latex for the left side? So I think that question is about creation and just what features we have there. So let's go. So again, you want to create your flashcards yourself. So yeah, you can choose the language again here for math and symbols on the left. And so you have this dropdown where you can insert any symbols. I don't know that that's actually the latex editor that you're expecting, but this is kind of what we have at this point. So this helps you out with some of those symbols. Alright, any other questions from the crowd? Appreciate you all joining. I'll give a little 10 second teacher wait time here for you all. Yeah, if you want to even just have a demo, anything new, happy to do that. But yeah, thank you all for joining. Appreciate all of you using Quizlet, using math, making your students engaged and helping everyone learn. We love what you do for all your students across the country and world. So thank you all for being there. Great. Doesn't look like any more questions. So, oh, someone joined late. So they asked if I can demo something new. Yeah, feel free to jump off for those of you that had saw everything. So, but great meeting you all and appreciate all of the engagement. So yeah, so I guess if any of you jumped in a little bit late, the key thing I want to focus on is creation. And so So yeah, so I guess if any of you jumped in a little bit late, the key thing I want to focus on is creation. And so let me just exit out of here. Back to the homepage. So creation for math is probably the one thing that differs the most for people compared to other our language options. And so here from creation, if you create a flashcard set, this is your foundational tool. The one thing I want to note is that we have this new option for uploading study guides where you can import text, upload a Google Drive folder, link that. But for math, it's still not good at practice problems. If you just have definitional or concept aspects, those can work super well. But if you want to actually do practice problems, it's not very good for that. So definitely highly recommend creating your flashcards for yourself. And so the things in here, if you have problems that have images, you definitely want to start with your problem on the right side so that you can upload an image. But some other cool things you can do is you can choose the language and so you can choose math and symbols. And so that allows you to have these to type in like a squared, for example, or if you have, you know, more complex math, you can do a sum. And this allows you to use those math symbols to help you out. That's really the biggest thing on the creation flow that wanted to point out for math teachers that's unique. And then there's just a ton of stuff to search for. So if you want to search for Sokotoa, you can find different flashcard sets here. And you can preview them. And so then if you find a set that you like, you can study it. And you can easily then either add it to a folder or add it to your class. Or you can save and edit that. So if you hit this button, you can actually copy it to your own account and then you can edit it yourself. So if there's certain things you want to adjust to it. I think those, that's the big thing to get started. Otherwise, a lot of these other modes and playing around are similar to other subjects as well. So great. Without any other questions, I'm going to sign off. Again, thank you all for being here. Really appreciate all that you do for all the students out there, learning and helping them grow in their math skills. So appreciate it and take care.